Bill? Bill, could you mute your...
Yes.
Is it... Sounds like there's traffic where you are. Can you mute your phone?
Yes, hold on.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
Well, I'll just say who's at the meeting. How about, uh, who's in attendance? All right? So we have... I'm Liz Banks. We have Tom Earl, Diane Tripaso, Phil Molyneux, Michael Young, Fidelis, Owen Luickay, and Marge Cooney, and Jean Bouvain. And those are the members of the board. The first thing on the agenda is the minutes for the meeting of May 13th, 2020. And I was not present, so I won't be voting on that. But if you all had a chance to read the minutes, if someone needs to make, uh, a motion...
Don't make a motion.
If there are any corrections, first of all, are there any corrections or comments? Discussion?
No.
No? All right, can make a motion about accepting the minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of May 20th, May 13th, 2020.
Tom, please state your name.
I'll second it.
Please state your name when you're motioning and seconding, please.
Okay, that's, um, Earl.
I second Diane Tripaso. Okay, so it's been, um, motioned and seconded. Uh, do we have to do voice vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll call the roll. It's... You are in favor, you can answer by saying yes. So, Tom Earl?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Michael Young?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
So, and Marge, you and I are going to one screen because we were asking. Okay, so the motion passed to accept the minutes.
Okay.
So, next on the agenda is determination for 112 Cedar Street by Anthony Skarnicki. We replace an existing deck with a screen porch, and there's also a garage.
Bill, we're getting a lot of background from you again. Thank you. All right, so just give us a moment. We're gonna allow Tony to share his screen so he can present his application to you.
Figure out how to do this, let's see.
Um, so I just...
My ability to share the screen... Oh, there we go.
There you go. I sent you the link to share your screen, so you should be able to share now.
Okay, can you see it?
Uh, yeah, we see a lot, a lot of documents there. Yeah.
Well, they were all open. Just starting on page one. Um, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Becky. She was out here the other day. I did, I think I did include everybody on the email chain sending these back with the approximate wetland transition zone and approximate wetland location. So, just to clear for the immediate construction.
Yes.
So that she knew we were outside of the town, the 800-foot barrier.
Yep, and Tony, just to let the board know, I did speak to Becky this afternoon, and she said that everything's all set, and she will be issuing you a letter permit.
Sorry?
I spoke to Becky this afternoon, and she said that the work is all set, and that she will be issuing you a letter permit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so I'll bear with the million windows, and I'll just close that one. So this is the... This one here is the overall scope of what I wish to accomplish in the next year to two years, hopefully. A small wall here on the side of the house, probably no more than six feet high. Um, this is the existing footprint where there was an old garage converted to a living room, and we want to convert it back to a garage. It'll be bigger than the original garage, but it will fit within the same footprint. This is the existing deck in the back. This was a previously approved, uh, extension that I never put in because I found that I had to move everything further over. Placement of the exit door from the kitchen had to be moved, and that's why I'm asking to expand the deck over to the left to encompass all of that. That means I have to move the hot tub as well. Uh, and then in the front corner, we wanted to expand the living room out, and then we would carry that across as a porch all under the same roof line, extend the roof line on the, uh, front porch. That was the first floor, and then there was an addition to the second floor, two years down the road, that we wanted to put on. Uh, anybody have any questions on this one?
Bill, is that... All right, excuse me, Tony. Uh, this is Tom Earl. Um, where is... What's the... What's the bottom of that retaining wall? Is that down below where we saw, down below with a fence?
That was right about where that fence line was that I pointed to you, right by the overgrowing grapevines?
Yes, and five feet high from that fence, from the bottom of the fence, right?
From about there, yes.
Yes, okay. You were trying to describe it to me up around the driveway, and I wanted to look at it. Okay, good, thank you.
It would follow... It would follow the lay of the land, um, I think if, for the most part, it would be under four feet, but there's one part where it crowns, and it would be five, anywhere between five and six feet high. And that's only because it crowns right there. It's the slope of the land at that point. And I think it's actually shown in one of the next, uh, let's see, in one of the next, um, oh, the slide for lack of a better term. Uh, let's see, where is it? Here we go. Um, so, for the extension to the deck, as you can see, I... Sorry? Do you want me to zoom? If this doesn't show up big enough, I can zoom in.
There you go.
So, Tom, this is where we were standing right here, and as you can see, the grade does come up like this to meet the house, and then it slopes off this way down. This is just a side view of the already approved extension from last year that I waited to put in. That's just showing that side.
Okay.
This is, you know, this is the existing condition... Excuse me, existing condition of the house right now. Now, this would be the roof line above the garage area or living room area currently, and then this is the rest of the house roof line for the second floor. Uh, let's see here.
Which one?
Uh, this one next. So this is what I'm proposing to do for the deck would be, this is the exterior door that had to be moved to this location, and it's above the basement exterior, uh, basement exit, so I would have to move this door or this, add this decking one step above the original decking to carry across the, make proper egress. And there's something that slipped my mind, and I have to put it on there, that didn't show a stairway coming down from the deck. Um, Jean, can I add that to a plan and send it to you after, or should it be part of this meeting or another meeting?
No, you can, you can send that, and we'll add it to the file. The stairway would be exempt under the zoning anyway because you need to have the means of egress. So, that could, if the board, if the board grants the determination, they could do that as a condition.
Okay. Um, it would be probably over here on the left side of the deck coming down because it's a quickest access to the driveway. Uh, any questions on this, on this slide?
Excuse me, Jean?
Yeah.
Marge Cooney. Uh, getting back to the stairs, can we have it annotated on the plan that was shown that there will be a staircase shown and amended?
Yes, I can...
It will be dated today's meeting, please?
Yes. I will add it on the file copy, and then if the board approves the determination, uh, we'll ask Tony to give us a revised plan for the file showing that. Is that...
Okay, as long as he, uh, you know, consents to it now, tonight.
Absolutely will. I can, I can consent to doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And as I said, I'd flipped my mind. I intended to put stairs on there, and I completely forgot. Were there any, any questions on this slide? Okay, I'll move to the next one. Let's see here. Uh, and this is just the view from the other side of the house. This would be the decking coming out here. This is the existing addition that I put on a year and a half ago, um, and this just shows the hot tub stand that would be supported to raise to the deck level. And the first floor, this would be the, uh, let's see, here we go. Sorry, this is the second floor addition, I'm sorry. So, to the right here would be the master bedroom above the garage with a walkout balcony which fit within the, uh, fit within, uh, actually, that does extend a little over the footprint, just to match the back edge of the house. The original intent was a master closet and a bathroom here and two bedrooms in the back. It's possible, as I, as I mentioned to Tom earlier, that bed, that closet might be entirely too large, almost the size of a bedroom. Um, and if I have to change that, I would obviously bring it to the, uh, building department's attention before I do anything, but, um, uh, each one would have a closet, there would be a laundry built in, a full bath, and then on the first floor over here would be the extension to the first floor living room and a front porch slash concrete slab deck that would be serving as a porch that would carry over.
Hey, Tony, I was...
Yes.
Thinking that you might save some, uh, hallway space there if you move the door on the left-hand bedroom to the other end of the wall.
This one?
No, the, this, um, the other door. Yeah, going into that.
Down here?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you put it up by the hallway, you can eliminate this hallway and either add to the closet or use that space for something else.
I see this. I don't know if I... I'm sorry, go ahead.
What is this? Is this a... Oh, is this the stairway?
That's the stairwell. The label did not transfer us through. I think I printed on the, uh, AutoCAD as a step point layer, and it shows up on my CAD file, but not here, so it means it's, uh, in a non-printing layer, I'll have to change that text. But that is a stairwell coming up, up to the second floor.
Okay. All right, that kind of eliminates the, um, the gain you get from moving.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, what is this? And this was the side view proposal for the full second floor. I'd be lifting it eight feet up, and I would have to change the pitch on the roof a little, uh, a little less to accommodate the original extension of the house, so it'd be a lower pitch, and it's gonna be approximately 24 and a half feet from grade. And I will be pouring an extension to the basement when I pour the, uh, when I put the addition on the first floor for the living room addition. And there, this would be the roof line, as I, as I said before, there'd be a secondary roof line right there, and it would travel the length of the house over the porch as well. Need it up? And then zoom that in, I'm sorry. Uh, are there questions?
Um, this is Fidelis, just one question. Did you say you, are you increasing your basement space, or you're just pouring new concrete for the basement wall?
I'm a little hesitant to just pour a concrete slab, just because it's very sandy underneath, and I don't want to risk having the, uh, I don't want to risk having the, the living room sink on a slab. Um, so my thought was to just pour an extension to the basement along with it.
Okay.
It's the same, same lot coverage, but it's a little more secure.
Yeah.
Uh, Marge Cooney, may I ask a question?
Sure.
What is the height from the, in the basement from the floor to the ceiling, approximately?
Uh, seven, seventeen, I believe it is.
I think it is. Are you anticipating at any time to finish that basement?
No.
All right. Um, let me get back to the retaining wall as well.
Sure.
Uh, you said that they're okay with it now, but if, are you intending to make any changes to that retaining wall in any way or in that area?
That wall, uh, the wall currently doesn't exist yet. I'm intending to build it.
Oh, because I thought you had one there?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I, I might have misspoke if I said that. I, it's not there, let me see here, um...
Okay.
I think it's this one. Oops, wrong screen. Oh, no, it does say, it does say propose, I'm sorry, yep.
Yeah, that's right.
So there would be proposed retaining wall on the side.
When do, uh, do you know when you expect to put it in, or?
I expect to, at the very least, get that in by fall, if not, start it on the garage as well.
Okay, so then you would have to go back to conservation if you do anything on that retaining wall, is that my understanding?
Um, I think the retaining wall that came into question a little further back, whoops, sorry, the controls on this are a little weird, was this one in here that, in the back end that I wanted to put in, because that puts me a lot closer to that wetland buffer zone that's way up here.
That's what I was concerned about, that, that one.
Right. I, uh, I was telling Becky when she was here the other day that I'm shelving that retaining, that retaining wall for the moment because I got a, a price tag in excess of $30,000 to put that in, and I might have to save a few years for that one.
Oh. No, uh, it reminded me of something when you were before it in 2016, and I remembered asking you at the time if you proposed doing a second floor addition on, I don't know if you remember it, and you told me possibly in a few years. So, I, that's, I'm asking, that's why I asked you about that retaining wall as well.
I see. Uh, it is, it is definitely wanted because we would like to have a little more backyard for the kids to run, uh, but that might, like I said, that's gonna be a little more expensive than most of the work I'm gonna do on, on the, uh, in the, in the first year, so I might shelve that idea for a little while, and I did tell that to Becky as well.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions from the board? Nope. Oh, then, uh, that's, that's the plan.
All right, so...
Hi, do you have a question?
So, Tony, I'm gonna take away the screen control from you, and there we go.
I just released it.
Okay, thanks. All right, this way we can see the board. Oh, Bill's outside, that's why.
Bill?
The perfect day for it.
Bill, it might be muted.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I don't...
No, I'm out, Beth.
Marge Cooney, I'm comfortable with it.
I, I have one question for Jean on the, um, uh, the report that you sent, and it said back in 2016 is when the applicant requested approval for that extension in the WIP
Yeah.
house, and I remember the meeting, I remember the house lot, it's got a very, very steep backyard, but it says approval was granted on August 17th, 2006.
Oh, two...
Is that supposed to be?
2016, sorry about that, 2016.
I have to forget, because I was, I...
Tony's been at this for a long time.
Yeah.
Started before I bought it.
It was a very memorable year, 2016, comprehensive plan, everything else, right?
That's right.
No, I remember you coming to the board in 2016, and I remember going to your property. I actually went by there again, and it's got that very steep, steep backyard.
Yeah, good for sledding if you can avoid the stumps.
All right, so is there any more questions or discussion? Nope, seeing none. Is anyone, um, wanna make a motion?
I'll make it.
Actually, you know, just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
One quick question, so the...
Sure.
The hot tub, right, is gonna be suspended, right?
I'm sorry?
The... The hot tub. You, you are gonna have a hot tub at the back, right?
Correct.
Okay, so i- is it gonna be suspended on, on wooden beams or steel, you know, how, how do you, how, how do you hope to, to do that?
I am going to build a platform that will be sitting on eight-by-eight pressure-treated lumber, which will be sitting on pylon, concrete pylons that are, um, poured into the ground, at least, at the least four feet deep. If I can get it a little further, I will.
Uh, yeah, because, because from your, from the section that you had, you know, that's, that's pretty high. I'm not sure if that was a sectional side, side elevation, you know, that's, uh, the, the tub is gonna be suspended, you know, I don't know how many feet it's gonna be from, from the grade, but that, that seems kinda high, you know, so I was just concerned on, you know, making sure that, um, you know, it's built in such a way that it doesn't become an issue.
Absolutely, I 100% agree. Uh, just so the board knows, I am, you're, I am an engineer, and I do have a network of, you know, industrial, civil, and mechanical engineers, and I will present something to the town showing that it will be able to support that tub without a problem, so.
Uh, Marge Cooney, what a comment. Uh, Mrs. Skarnicki, didn't you have a hot tub there before?
I did, and it was a different, it was a slightly different, it, I don't anticipate getting any higher than five or six feet off the ground at most from, at the bottom of the tub level, um, but just in case, I will make sure that thing is as sturdy as Mount Everest.
Yeah, I recall there was a hot tub there when we did the, when I was on the site.
Yes, there was. Unfortunately, a crack and all the water leaked.
Liz, we're just gonna see if there's anyone on the call-in line, any abutters?
Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on the determination for 112 Cedar Street?
No, there's no one on the line.
You want me to go forward then with the determination?
Yes.
Sure, yes.
All right. Um, I'll move, uh, I'll make a determination to, to grant a determination to Anthony Skarnicki at 112 Cedar Street, if I pronounced the name wrong, I apologize, to extend the deck and to, uh, wait a second, extend it back, and to... We, oh, to, to remake and add to the home to create, I've got a word here that I'm not rea... Oh, to renovate and add to the home to create a two-con garage with a full second floor, further to add a small addition to the front of the home and a six-by-19 front porch. Have I covered it all?
Think so.
Does that include the small retaining wall on the site?
Uh, well, yes, that would be all of it, and then further, as shown, so if anything is not clear, as shown on CAD drawing, which is not to scale, dated 5/20/2020, there's no revision shown, and of course, you're gonna annotate what we said on the plan.
Absolutely.
And...
The wall can't be approved, I thought, unless conservation approves it.
Well, we, we said that, um, before, right?
The, the... The sidewall is, yeah, the sidewall is okay with conservation, Bill, just not the rear, the, the wall in the rear. He would have to file with conservation to go forward with that one.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The proposal does not intensify or create additional nonconformities, approval is granted provided that all issues concerned, permits deemed necessary by various departments, boards, et cetera, be adhered to and in compliance by any construction.
I'll second that.
Do you have a motion? Then second it.
Second.
Uh-huh.
Tom, second it. All right, any discussion?
Uh, did we, did we put the second floor in that discussion that you just did? I wasn't sure, you did, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I, all right. Bill, I'll move second.
Any more discussion? Okay, so we'll take a roll, call, vote. Um, you're in favor, say yes, if you're not, say no. I'll start, um, Tom Earl?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so the motion passed unanimously. Um...
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Once I get the revised drawing from you, I'll get you your signed copy of your determination, and we will provide a copy to the building department as well.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, all of you.
Yeah, Tony, welcome.
Thank you, welcome. Welcome.
Thank you, be well.
Bye.
Is there any old business?
No, I don't have any.
Any new business? No? Okay, then.
I have one thing, Liz, just to, the, your next meeting date is July 15th. You will have, we believe, three or four applications on that meeting. Does, would the board like to meet at 6:00 or 6:30?
Hold on, what's the day?
It is Wednesday, July 15th, is your next meeting.
I know, so, let me check, hold on.
Liz is usually on vacation, I think, though, I think, usually she's on vacation. Jean?
Yes?
Jean, I have a question. Do we have to vote to use to sign, to sign the determination and...
Oh, yes, you do, you're right. I had the planning board vote, but you're right, you'll need to do that before we get off tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so the 15th, I probably will not be here.
Will everybody else be? Will everybody else be present? Or do we need to move the date?
Yes.
Oh, we've already put it in the paper. It's already in the paper, so hopefully the rest of you can make it.
I'll, I'll be there.
I'm good, I'll be there.
Okay, great.
I have no issues.
All right. So did you want, did you wanna start at 6:00 or 6, is 6:30 better?
6:30, I mean.
6:30, okay, so we'll do it 6:30 on July 15th. All right.
Okay.
And then, Liz, Diane just brought up that you need to vote to authorize me to sign the minutes for posting.
But you went in and out, can you repeat that?
Could you just vote to authorize me to sign the minutes for posting? We're getting a stack of minutes that need to be posted.
Okay.
Do you have to also do the determination then?
Sign the determination, too?
Well, yeah.
We get that at the last meeting.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. All right, I make a motion to authorize the town planner to sign the approved minutes for posting.
Second.
Liz?
Uh, I'll do the roll call vote again, and let's, yeah, we can't see everybody. All right, hold on. Tom?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Will, Bill?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that passes.
Okay.
So, you're, I'll sign. You're gonna sign for me on the determination, is that what?
I am, yes, yep.
Okay.
Alright.
Sounds good.
Very good.
Any other business? Alright, motion.
I make a motion, we turn.
Second. I noted, seconded, oh, two.
Do we have to go to roll call again, Tom?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And myself is yes, so it's unanimous.
Okay, good night.
Be safe and be happy, everybody.
Nice to see everybody.
Good seeing everyone. Alright.
Good to see everyone. Now, where's you, where are you, Mike?